No. I'm not being taken away.
You're needing everybody.
And I count, I'm counting on you and Billy.
Coming out to our December 2nd, 2024 Common Council Meeting. Cannot hear?
No.
Okay. Might have to turn your hearing aids up. Anyway, please silence your phones and can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? More of an allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Green, are you down there? Okay. Sorry? No. I'm not being taken away. You're needing everybody.
And I count, I'm counting on you and Billy.
Thank you for coming out to our December 2nd, 2024 Common Council Meeting. Uh, cannot hear?
No.
Okay. You might have to turn your hearing aids up. Anyway, please silence your phones and can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? More of an allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Green, are you down there? Okay. Sorry? Ask everyone, please remove your hats, bow your heads for a word of prayer. Precious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this privilege and the opportunity to come together as a body of citizens here for the city of Muncie. We ask, dear Lord, that you would guide and direct the assembly tonight, Lord, in the things that are said and done. Lord, you would guide us to do the right thing. Lord, you would guide us to do the right thing. Lord, we ask that you would help us, dear heavenly Father, as a city, to grow together, to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. We ask, Lord, that you be with us at this time of year, Lord, and those that are without. Lord, we would have a spirit of Christmas about us, that we would care and put forth effort to those that are around us. Lord, do what we can to help our fellow citizens. Guide us, Lord, direct us. We ask all of these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Our citizens' recognition this month is going to be by Jeff Green and next month will be Councilwoman Nora Powell.
This evening, I have chosen an individual from the South Side of Muncie. I'm partial to South Side at this moment. I lived there, my children went there. This individual was born, raised on the South Side of Muncie and went to South Side High School, a graduate of South Side High School. She said if she is cut, she bleeds red. Uh, South Side's red. Okay. Uh, she attended Ivy Tech and Ball State University, deeply committed and invested in the South Side of Muncie. She's the president of the Muncie South Side Neighborhood Association. She's a Girl Scout leader, Troop 4469. I might say she also has the brownies also. She has a variation in age of those. She is a receiver of the Mayor's Art Award, also the Girl Scout Service Unit Fall Production Manager for Delaware County. She serves on Fiona's Place Board as a member, a member of the active Avondale. She has organized the Mark Kinman Fun Day at Cooley Park, and some of you have been there. Ball Corporation Park, she has organized the basketball and kickball tournament between the citizens. Most of the time it's the young people in the fire department and the police department. Uh, she's worked for the South Side Pantry, stood in the youth of our community. She cares about them because they're the leaders of tomorrow and they're worthy of our time and our energy that we give to them, to raise them and to teach them to be productive citizens. In addition to the boards and committees that she has founded, she's found time to attend many of the conferences that are given, some of the cool events in our community, such as IDEA, the conference which is held in conjunction with the neighborhood partners and resources, Fire Up Downtown, the Washington Street Bridge Festival and the Bridge Dinner, Iron Man. She has been a big supporter of that and has invested time and she has the ability to engage others in those activities. Uh, she did an awful lot in getting volunteers to help in the Iron Man, as well as other things on the South Side of town. A Girl Scout Leader Service Conference every year, South Side Cleanup. We have done, uh, we've had the privilege and opportunity to set forth dumpsters on South Side. Uh, not only that, but walk the neighborhoods to pick up trash. Courtney was one of those who's willing to do that alongside of everybody else that would come. Not only that, but she would pick up trash at different locations and at Walmart. These are just to mention a few of the things that she does while still fitting in time to share with her family and friends and her four-legged son, Zane, as she calls him. And we want to present Courtney with the Citizens of the Month Award. It was she come forward, please, at this time.
Yes. You just gave it to me, but I'm gonna give it back, but just for a minute. I wrote a little something because I have a really hard time staying on track and I might cry. So, um, first of all, thank you so much to our District One Councilman Jeff Green for the ability to be awarding me this honor tonight. I'm not only gracious for the nomination, but for all the help that you've provided to the South Side of Muncie in the many years that you've not only sat in the seat for District One, but resided there as well. I'd also like to thank the amazing crew that is behind me. If I haven't had the ability to work with you yet, I definitely look forward to it. If we have worked together, I'm sure it was a blast and I look forward to those things again as well and the many endeavors that will be 2025. As Mr. Green stated, I've been a part of many different organizations, boards, foundations, and just all around amazing community events. This would not have been possible without hard work and dedication and I'm happy to share those types of things with you here tonight. I'm accepting this honor tonight, but it would be dishonest for me to share these details alone. I'd like to give a special thanks to the South Side Neighborhood Association Board and Neighbors because without you all, there would be no Neighborhood Association. I'd like to give a big shout out to all my Girl Scout friends, the Girl Scout Service Unit Delaware County that provide events for Girl Scouts to come together, grow and learn, especially Troop 4469. I knew that one was gonna be hard. Um, they always hold a special place in my heart and to all the community family that I've gained during this amazing journey. Family is not only blood, it's everyone that you bring into your life along the way. Some of my family are represented here in the audience tonight and some are watching via the live stream. And to those people, you're my true sounding board. You're always encouraging me to continue along, joining me in the process and allowing me to vent when needed. To you all, I'm always so grateful. Thank you again for the amazing honor of being the December 2024 Citizen of the Month. Roll call, please.
Mason?
Here.
Selfie?
Here.
McIntosh?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Howl?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
Goleen?
Here.
Basham?
Here.
Present. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments of last month?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
Howl?
Yes.
Fishman?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to appointments, the boards and commissions tonight. We have one on the MITS board and I have a letter from Julia Mason. Uh, would like to be reappointed to the MITS board. Julia, you wanna come up here and explain a little about yourself to the council?
Yes, so thank you very much. First of all, I want to apologize for my appearance. I just came from Dyersburg, Tennessee via Evansville and Bloomington where the weather was bad, but I made it on time. Um, so what I would like, what I would like to do at this time is request a reappointment of myself on the MITS board. During my tenure, we were visible, we were more visible in the community with community activities to include the Muncie Ball Family Fun Day, June 20th, 2020. We also were involved in the Muncie Authority Backpack Program. We developed a healthy relationship with the City Hall and administration to include the Delaware County Planning Board and also we developed wonderful, wonderful, uh, uh, one-way and two-way and three-way communication with the Muncie Community Schools. Also, um, we got totally involved in making sure that MITS is involved in bringing our chair to the table when it comes to various organizations' planning, buildings, so that we could transport people, pick up people and those types of things. So I come before you that you will reappoint me in my position. Any questions of me?
Any questions?
All right.
We have any other nominations?
Thank you.
I nominate.
Any other nominations? Roll call for reappointing Julia Mason?
Yes. Howl?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Fishman?
Yes. We're gonna move on to appointments, the boards and commissions tonight.
We have one on the MITS board and I have a letter from Julia Mason. Uh, would like to be reappointed to the MITS board. Julia, you wanna come up here and explain a little about yourself to the council?
Yes, so thank you very much. First of all, I want to apologize for my appearance. I just came from Dyersburg, Tennessee via Evansville and Bloomington where the weather was bad, but I made it on time. Um, so what I would like, what I would like to do at this time is request a reappointment of myself on the MITS board. During my tenure, we were visible, we were more visible in the community with community activities to include the Muncie Ball Family Fun Day, June 20th, 2020. We also were involved in the Muncie Authority Backpack Program. We developed a healthy relationship with the City Hall and administration to include the Delaware County Planning Board and also we developed wonderful, wonderful, uh, uh, one-way and two-way and three-way communication with the Muncie Community Schools. Also, um, we got totally involved in making sure that MITS is involved in bringing our chair to the table when it comes to various organizations' planning, buildings, so that we could transport people, pick up people and those types of things. So I come before you that you will reappoint me in my position. Any questions of me?
Any questions?
All right.
We have any other nominations?
Thank you.
I nominate.
I nominate.
Any other nominations? Roll call for reappointing Julia Mason?
Yes. Howl?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fishman?
Yes.
Mine?
Now, we have, we have a, um, um, lady on the Edit Board, Watasha Barnes.
Watasha.
Watasha, I'm sorry.
It's okay. You should know me now. Yes. Um, I am Watasha Barnes Griffin, 308 North Mangrove Lane, Muncie, Indiana, 47303, and I am seeking reappointment to the Muncie Edit Building Corp. I have served in that position, um, and I would like to continue to serve. We, um, insured the bond for the parking garage and previously we had the bond for Horizon Convention Center. But, um, yeah, I feel like if you live in a community, you should serve and give back to a community and I love Muncie and I'll use every bone and fiber of my body to make it better for me and those people here and those who are underrepresented. And so, um, even sitting at that table, there's not a lot of diversity. And so I believe that that skillset, diversity of thought, diversity of color and, and diversity of ideas is important. And so I ask that you, um, reappoint me to the building corp. Thank you.
I'd like to make that nomination.
First of all, are there any questions for, from the board? Okay.
I would like to nominate, reappoint Ms. Watasha Barnes Griffin to the Edit.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Basham?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
Howl?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Need approval of the city council dates and deadlines. Do we have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mason?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mason?
Mason?
Mr. Mason?
Could you read that again?
Approval of the...
Approval of the... Next year's agenda.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Selfie?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Howl?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Goleen?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Fishman?
Yes. Moving on to committee reports. Yeah, I'd like, yeah. Yeah, go ahead. I have a committee report. I'd like to, um, report on ongoing negotiations between the city of Muncie and the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP, and Firefighters 1348. We met again just before Thanksgiving and we are meeting again tomorrow and each session seems to get closer and closer to, um, a contract. And, um, we hope we're, we hope we get very close tomorrow. What about the ASME people? I'm sorry? What about the ASME people? I was not asked to sit on that, uh, in that session. I think those negotiations began before I was seated on the council, therefore, um, I was not invited to sit on those negotiations. What's going on? Sure. Sure.
My name's Aubrey Chris. I'm one of the Assistant City Attorneys. At our last ASME session, their legal counsel let us know that they would be getting back to us on a counter offer and scheduling for another meeting. We have yet to hear back from them. Um, our office was gonna reach out to them this week. We figured with the holidays last week, just schedules weren't working. So we are reaching out to them this week to see what's going on because we have not heard back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going on the committee, another committee reporter is Andrew Dale here tonight.
Well, good evening. My name is Andrew Dale. I serve as one of your two appointments to the Muncie Redevelopment Commission. As you may recall, back on June 3rd of this year, MRC Commissioner Zane Bishop, your other MRC appointment, provided an update on some of the projects of the MRC. My update tonight won't be an update detailing the disposition of MRC projects. That is something that should be addressed by the city administration or the president of the MRC. Tonight, I'd like to share some observations and make some recommendations to city council that if pursued, could go a long way in mitigating concerns that many people, including myself, have about the MRC and its current functions and that puts safeguards in place to protect and maximize the value of taxpayer dollars. Per the MRC's handbook, the main purpose of the MRC is to create opportunities for development, growth, investment and jobs, with a focus in the more blighted areas of Muncie. The MRC oversees business development opportunities and is authorized to acquire and dispose of abandoned properties. The duties of the MRC are clear and require due diligence. They include identification of problem areas and community needs, utilization of strategic planning activities and interaction with policymakers, establishment of goals to address identified problems and needs and opportunities, the acquisition and the conveyance of property and meeting certain statutory requirements pertaining to annual reporting and planning. Annually, no less than a few million, million dollars of our economic development income tax dollars and proceeds from long-established tax increment finance districts leverage vastly more private, public and even nonprofit-based capital. Coupled with an occasional municipal bond issuance and various grants, much more can be achieved. Conversely, a lack of planning or haphazard planning or unilateral decision-making squanders vast amounts of public funds intended to advance our collective well-being. The tasking of the MRC demands that its work be organized in partnership with our citizens, local officials, policymakers, experts and constituency groups, and especially those most impacted by the mission of the MRC. Unfortunately, little of this is done presently. Rather, the MRC is a reactive body which primarily approves funding requests for projects brought to the commission by Mayor Ridenhour and Jeff Howl, Director of the MRC, often with little notice and typically void of discussion and scrutiny. For example, the former downtown YMCA was purchased by the MRC for $500,000 on December 20th of 2022. The public bid process, which garnered only one bid from a Colorado-based developer, was squeezed down to a bare minimum of 14 days. The MRC closed on the former YMCA property back this July 11th and it was, it was closed at an amount of $770,000. Now, on par, that sounds good until you factor in that it's a 10-year seller financed sale. The MRC is the bank and holds significant risk. The MRC is to contribute up to $200,000 from the 270 gain from the sale towards environmental remediation and/or demolition activities. The MRC is to rebate to the developer an amount equal to all property taxes paid over a five-year period. That's substantial and it's a slick way of circumventing the property tax abatement process that is the jurisdiction of all of you, city council. And finally, we're in a hole. For the next several years until a mortgage is paid off and yet determined property tax revenues kick in, what happens if and when future tenants are tax exempt? Some questions arise. Why did Mayor Ridenhour, in his capacity as Executive Director of the MRC, provide a minimum of 14 days to receive only one bid for such an important development project? How did a Colorado-based developer become aware of an MRC property ahead of a public bid notice while other local and regional developers, who might have been interested in submitting a proposal, be substantially hindered in participating, given the significantly condensed bid process? Why are taxpayers still paying the utilities on the former YMCA property at the tune of approximately $200,000 a month, five months after the property was sold? Are taxpayers expected to continue to flip the bill? How does a dollar-for-dollar rebate of property taxes paid over five years not equate to a property tax abatement? I've asked some of these questions and I've not received adequate answers. What we currently have is a fire, aim and ready approach to our redevelopment efforts. To protect our citizens and taxpayers, there are a few things city council could do to help rectify shotgun planning, lackluster results and poor transparency. First, city council could pass or revise ordinance stipulating more conducive durations of time to receive requests for proposals and bids. And if one proposal or bid is received, a mechanism could be put in place to evaluate why a sole bid or proposal should or should not be accepted. Second, city council could pass an ordinance that ensures that no chief executive or public board or commission can commit Edit and TIF funding without first demonstrating compatibility with an adopted strategic plan or a prospective project which has previously been shared with the public and received public input and acknowledged by all of you, the city council. Third, city council could pass an ordinance that stipulates the conditions and the demonstrable value for which a property can be sold for a minimal amount of funds or conveyed at no monetary gain. And finally, city council could pass an ordinance that prohibits a mayor and any other board or commission from rebating, prorating or delivering any amount of tangible value in exchange for property taxes to be paid without first securing city council approval. Now, I have other recommendations, but these four recommendations I provided would go a long way in curdailing such lavish and dangerous financial incentive practices and put in place a transparent, community economic and redevelopment framework that earns the trust of our citizens and our taxpayers. In short, what we need is a ready, aim and only then, fire approach. Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah. I wanna bring something up. You mentioned a couple of things that kinda rubbed me the wrong way and I'll just be honest with you. You talked about blighted, due diligence, you said strategic planning, you said acquisition, which my question is regarding acquisition right now, towards lack of planning impacted by the mission of the MRC. At your last meeting, there was a property on Walnut Street. Why did you vote to not, for the MRC not to acquire the property and get ahold of it? So we know what's built. I'm not done. Especially across of Muncie Central High School. So if we are talking about planning, if we are talking, and as a teacher, I am very upset about that. You had the opportunity as an MRC person to decide what goes across that. And I've got news for you. I don't think you're gonna like what is gonna go across from that because I'm sure you're gonna come up here and you are going to oppose it, but you had every opportunity to take control of it and you did not.
Well, to answer your question, Commissioner or Councilmember Selfie, truthfully, I have my own standards to live by and to govern by. I don't believe, I believe in first right of refusals. I don't believe in obtaining appraisals and getting in the way of the public sector before the public sector has an opportunity to venture into that opportunity. I don't believe that government is the solution, most of the time.
You're asking us to do all this. You're asking...
No, I didn't ask you to do that at all.
Make all these restrictions. You're talking from two ends.
No, I don't think I am. I think in that particular instance, the, the commission was presented with the opportunity to get appraisals. We debated that. It was listened to and actually, appraisals were not sought on that property. Mr. How, our director, came back and stated that he thought it was wise to let the private sector do its work and I think that's exactly what's happening. Why should government get in the way of the private sector? So I'm a little confused by your question, but I understand your intent.
Well, I'm sure this will be a topic to just be discussed later and I'm expecting you not to be out here complaining about what's going on in there.
No, I'm not complaining.
I mean, in the future, because I'm not happy with what's going on in there and you had an opportunity as the person appointed by this council to take charge of that property and make some good decisions. And in my opinion, I'm sorry, I'm a teacher, it's Muncie Central. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll leave that for the...
The reason I'm confused is because, the reason I'm confused, Ms. Selfie, is the fact that the entire commission didn't go forward with any decision on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Green? Yes, I'd like to have a copy, if you don't mind, of the item, the four items that you mentioned.
Sure.
That were key.
I'll get them to you. I'll get them to you.
I'd appreciate it.
You got it.
Thank you.
You got it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Sure, I'll provide them to anybody who wants them. Well, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate your ears.
Thank you.
And we have a miracle out here on White River Boulevard. They've got started on the skating rink, the skating rink for the kids out there, which is way past due, but they're making real progress on it, so I applaud them for getting the kids started on that right away. It's been over a year, but we just, we've got to live with what we've got, but there's been progress out there. Okay, moving on to resolutions previously introduced, ordinance 33-24.
Ordinance 33-24, and ordinance amending ordinance 24-23 fixing the maximum salaries of each and every appointed officer, employee, deputy, assistant, departmental, and institutional head of the City of Muncie, Indiana, included herein for the year 2025.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 33-24?
So move.
Anyone wishing to speak on that ordinance tonight?
A couple of things I wanted to point out on the salary ordinance. These, we're going to amend the elected official or the appointed officials on air to reflect the budget cuts that you made, and I will tell you this, that the salary ordinance is not going to 100% reflect the budget. It just can't, because you have so many variables that go into it. It just sets the ceiling for it. A couple of other things that we would like to, because I know you're wanting to see those adjustments, and I will get those to you. The deputy controller, we are going to live by the budgets on everything, exactly the way the council set the budgets, so that will be adhered to. The deputy controller, as far as we want you to keep that, and the communications director on the salary ordinance, but they will not be funded through the general fund. We have, they are important positions, and we are going to fund those through added funds, so that way it doesn't affect the budget. And also with, it'll be the next one that you that you will be talking about, ordinance 34-24, the same there, we'll make adjustments to what, for the elected officials, to what was passed, for what you passed on the budget.
Mr. Wright, could you make sure that park superintendent, program director, and the urban forester are the correct amounts-
Yes.
-and not the one, thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
And, I mean, yeah, yeah, that's fine. And as far as, I'll work on those this week and make sure I get those out to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Basham?
I'm sorry, I did not understand that question. Could you go into greater detail, councilperson?
The park superintendent, program director, and urban forester, the actual numbers, the deductions, when we read them off in the long, long pages, the new number that I read was incorrect.
Okay.
And so we were correcting that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Was, I have a question. Was that in your last report that you sent today? Is that, is that what you-
That was what the report that, that was the budget.
Okay, so, and you're gonna, yeah, so you're good, okay. Thank you, that's okay.
The report that was sent today is actually an income expense report. It's not necessarily the budget.
And we need to give the guy a 24-hour, yeah, okay. Okay, so, in the future, we did, I did send an email out that we need to give you, would you appreciate 24-hour notice before you get asked to turn in a report?
I read that. I was, I was at meetings this afternoon.
Well, I assume that with the holidays and everything else, you would need a 24-hour notice, thank you.
Well, I believe by city ordinance, that's supposed to be provided to us monthly anyway, so.
Okay. Oh, that's, that's no problem.
If we just want to have a standing, a standing order to have that sent to the council members before every meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'll agree with that.
Anyone else?
Absolutely. Doing it the right way.
Anyone from the audience?
And that's the performance review. That's right, thank you.
Hello, just a couple items, some proposed amendments that I have in the fifth, I believe it is introductory paragraph, which isn't technically a part of what you're adopting, but it requires you to salaries in the budget. I think to avoid any inconsistencies, as Mr. Wright just mentioned, I would recommend striking that provision, but keeping obviously the amount the same, because then it would allow them to fund the position through edit, but then not be inconsistent with the budget that you passed. In addition, I would remove, as I discussed last month, section four, which talks about how this ordinance supersedes ordinance 24-23. I think Mr. Wright agreed that was just a carryover from last year. This is the new first ordinance for 2025 salaries, so we don't need that section four in there.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance as instructed by our legal counsel.
Second.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Edgell.
Hang on just a minute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Make a motion to amend 33-24 to what Mr. Gibson said.
We just did, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Edgell, and I'm from Muncie. I have a question about edit funds, as it was brought up in this, this area. So are those just given to the mayor in the budget, and then he chooses how that works? What, where he spends them on, or is each expense in the edit fund appropriated first? Anyone? Sounds like a mayor. Well, I noticed when I did my research that some, some cities don't allow that, and they allow things to be, yeah, if you can answer it for me, yeah, that'd be great.
Matt might be able to confirm this for me, but I believe that the total amount, just the set amount, is appropriated so that the mayor can spend it, but he has to spend it in accordance with the capital improvement plan, which is filed, I can't remember the-
Every two years.
Every two years, I believe. But yeah, actually approving each expenditure is not something with any council's authority.
Is that done differently in other places? There's all kinds of ways to do that correctly.
I'm not familiar with what other cities do. I can tell you it's largely governed by state law.
Okay, thank you.
Am I correct that the council has no oversight over procedures or?
Correct. You just appropriate the-
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to talk? Roll call, please.
A second, no, we made a motion to, no, we need to make a motion. Make a motion to adopt as amended, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Gollian?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve? I mean, just roll call, please, on the motion, on the amendment. Ordinance 34-24.
Ordinance 34-24, and ordinance fixing the salaries for all elected officials of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2025.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this tonight?
Yes, I had mentioned earlier on it, and just to reflect what I said, the adjustments on there was with what you passed on the budgets, we'll make the corrections on that.
Questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Roll call, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 34-24.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gollian?
Yes.
Yes.
Green? Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Ordinance 35-24.
Ordinance 35-24, and ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Police Department of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 35-24.
Roll call, please.
McIntosh?
Yes.
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 Mason?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Gollian?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Dizman?
Yes. The ordinance 36-24.
Ordinance 36-24, and ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of each and every member of the Muncie Fire Department of the City of Muncie, Indiana for the year 2025.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Is there any here, anybody wishing to speak on that from the council tonight? Have anybody from the audience want to speak on that tonight? Roll call, please.
Basham?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Gollian?
Yes.
The ordinance 37-24.
Ordinance 37-24, an ordinance of the City of Muncie establishing Title IX, Chapter 40, Chapter 41, Chapter 42, and Chapter 43 of the City of Muncie Code of Ordinances entitled Code of Ethics.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 37-24?
Second.
Anyone speak on this tonight?
Hi, Aubrey Chris, Assistant City Attorney again. Before your meeting, I handed out a packet of information for you. It includes all the notes I believe Dan Gibson had already sent to you, but I wanted to make sure that you had our language as well. It just goes through what the legal department is recommending in terms of changes, and then attached to that is also the email that we had received from Ames Legal Counsel that outlines what their concerns were, which Dan did address most of those concerns. If anyone has questions for me, I'm here to answer those.
When you say, "address most of those concerns," could you go into greater detail?
There are some concerns that Dan and I, as an attorney, we can't make that decision for our client, so as you're looking through that, there are some changes that, we call them substantive changes, we can't, as attorneys, decide that for our clients, so that's what I mean by he wasn't able to make those changes.
Anyone else from the, Mr. Green?
I have a question. Once these changes have been made, has AIM been contacted, and how do they feel about these changes?
They haven't seen all of the updates and what we are recommending. My understanding is they haven't seen an updated ordinance. I could reach out to them, but I don't, I don't believe she, the legal counsel has received a copy. Dan, did you?
I spoke to that attorney today, and they had not. I spoke to that attorney today, and they had not received.
Okay. Yeah.
She didn't indicate that she was expecting one?
Yeah, she didn't mention it in the call that Dan and I had with her, that she wanted a copy, so.
Mr. Gibson, what do you think about this? This thing she handed out tonight?
I addressed this in my summary that I, that I sent you all over the weekend. You know, like I said, there are, you know, some of the changes have been made in the proposed amendments that I'll get to here shortly, once, once we figure out where we're going from here. Some of the other things, I don't really have an opinion on one way or the other. They're not legally required for you to make those changes for this to be enforceable, but they are, you know, substantive changes you want to make, then by all means you are permitted to do so.
Yeah, after Ms., the two ladies speak, I would like to, I would suggest to send this to the Government Affairs Committee to, since you two, how do you feel about that? I would, as a co-sponsor, I would like to send it to the governmental affairs committee so they can make the final decision, if it's agreeable with all of you, just to kind of settle things.
I am, I'm also a co-sponsor, and I'm not against that per se, but I do feel like there's been plenty of time. This, you know, commission has been working on this for months and has been really transparent about it and really open about it, and I know some of these questions came over the holidays, but, so again, I'm not necessarily against it, but I mean, I'm a little disappointed that we're, you know, can't just go ahead and, and pass this.
Yeah, I, I agree with councilperson Gollian, yes, there was, it was very thorough, and this is my decision to send it that way, to the governmental affairs committee, I want to go on record, is no reflection on the committee people, but it just seems that we have varying, you know, differences of opinion, and I think we have a committee as a council that's in charge of that, and I would be comfortable going by the recommendation of the governmental affairs committee.
Mr. President, are you suggesting councilperson Salvi that we table this for a month before we approve or not? Is that what you're recommending?
Yeah, I send it to the governmental affairs committee and let them make that decision, and I don't want to say a month, because-
Oh.
-the president of the committee has to set times in its public hearings, yes.
Is that the-
I don't want to put a timetable on it.
I'm with you. No, 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 of course not.
You don't have to put a timetable on it, but that would be the appropriate, you know, mechanism to table and forward to-
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that your, is that your-
I would like to table it.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything on?
Give any more questions than me?
Roll call, please.
Howell?
No.
Salvi?
Yes.
Gollian?
No.
Garrett?
No.
McIntosh?
No.
Basham?
Yes.
Mason?
No.
Green?
I have a question. Am I, am I allowed to make a statement before I vote? No.
It's okay to say.
I know I'm holding things up. Yes.
Dizman?
No.
That's three yeses, six no's.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Now?
Now.
Okay. I think this is too important to make a mistake. That's, that's what I'm concerned with. I want to make sure we get it right for the City of Muncie, for all officials that work for the city, all the elected officials, all the employees. I don't want us to have a problem. Can we still send this off with the new amendments and changes that have been made to get the verification, as councilwoman, Councilwoman Rose Salvi has asked, to see where we stand to make sure we don't have to make more changes to that? Can we do that?
Send it to what? It's too late, I think, now.
Send the matter to a, to a committee, even if it's been adopted and you're considering, you know, changing-
So we could still do that and get their input on what it is? Because I know that they have worked with all the other cities that have these, the ethics ordinances put forth, and I want to make sure-
Is that AIM or the Government Affairs Committee?
I would like to see AIM have it.
Okay.
Because I, that's my opinion, but I, I want to make sure that we do it right. I don't want to have to make changes go back and forth. I want it done right the first time. They work too hard on this to mess it up. You know, I don't, I don't want anything to be wrong with it. That's how I feel. want anything to be wrong with it. That's how I feel. And I want it to go forward.
Clarify one thing. The, the concerns that were raised by AIM, I believe, have all been addressed or determined to be not necessary changes.
Okay.
The things that have not been made, well, once I recommend these amendments that I sent to you over the weekend.
Yep.
The, the other items are suggestions from the administration's legal counsel that are not directly coming from AIM. They're just items that they would like to see. And so, obviously, we can still send this to AIM, and nothing prevents you from considering amendments in the future.
Okay.
So yeah, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah.
This for legal counsel. Just so that I can understand, in your opinion, and with your communication with the city attorneys, do you believe that their points are valid from a legal standpoint? And would you see why we would want to send it to AIM? I mean, what is your professional opinion? You are our guide here.
Again, Ames, all of their issues have been addressed or determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aubrey, or determined by the both of us to not be necessary to, to fix. There, there was just, things pointed out that were not to be, didn't need to be changed. But what Ms. Chris passed out also included suggestions from the administration that did not directly come from AIM. And those are items that, you know, I've given you my.
How do you feel about those changes?
I've given you my thoughts on those, but at the end of the day, they are, I don't think they are necessary for this to be a legal and enforceable ordinance moving forward. If they are items, changes you want to make, that is, that is your decision as the legislative body. Before we go any further, I would like to at least get on the record the suggested changes that come from our conversations with AIM. And if you bear with me for a minute, I think it's important to read these into the record. Again, I'd sent a redlined version out, but in section forty point zero four B.
Could you give us page numbers?
Page five.
Thank you.
In subsection B, which bleeds on to page six, I recommend adding at the end of that section, which governs how many meetings one can attend virtually, to add that the limitation does not apply unless the electronic participation is due to military service, illness, or other medical condition, death of a relative, or an emergency involving actual or threatened injury to persons or property. That suggestion comes directly from the state statute on virtual attendance at meetings. In section forty point one-two on page ten, forty point one-two B three, I recommend adding contracts before rules or policy. On page eleven, forty point one-four, I recommend adding at the end, in accordance with Chapter forty-three of the Code of Ordinances. In section forty-one point zero one B on page eleven, I recommend adding after, shall be an appointment, shall be for a term of three years, commencing on January first of the effective year of appointment. Just to make it clear, the terms of the commission start on January first. In section forty-one point zero five on page thirteen, I recommend adding a sentence at the end that says, "All documents received or generated by the Ethics Commission that relate to an employee shall become a part of that employee's official personnel file maintained by the city." That was a recommendation that I believe came from the Public Access Counselor. In section forty-three point zero one on page sixteen, in B, C, and D, recommend adding, "After Corporation Counsel or Corporation Counsel's Designee," under this, under state law, Corporation Counsel is a specific person, one of the city attorneys, and this would allow him to have others in his office conduct that training. On page seventeen, under section two, I recommend adding at the end a sentence that says, "However, the enforcement procedure and timeline set forth in Chapter forty-two shall not be effective until March first, 2025, to allow sufficient time for the Ethics Commission to be appointed, organized, and trained." And then I recommend adding section three, which would state that this ordinance shall supersede any prior ordinance or resolution of the common council of the City of Muncie that is inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance. Those are my recommended changes, again, based upon the conversations that we had with AIM.
This is a question for legal. So, anything that has happened before of the date that we vote on this, or this is solidified, cannot be brought up to the Ethics Committee, correct?
Yeah, if it wasn't a violation, yeah. I mean, there was nothing to violate up until this is adopted.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Gibson, returning to the conversation before you entered into record, your changes to, to pass it through AIM or the Government Administration Committee, actually, isn't that what we just voted on?
You voted no to tabling it and forwarding it to the government.
So what would be the point of further action before AIM or before?
If somebody wanted to consider and propose an amendment after this is adopted.
Okay.
I'm not going to sit back down until I'm.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Going once?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Gibson, do we need to make a motion to amend the ordinance? I make a motion to amend ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-four with the recommendations of our legal counsel.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Mason?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Selvi?
Yes.
Gullian?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt as amended.
Roll call, please.
Public comment, maybe?
Public comment. I apologize.
Hi, my name is Michael Wilson. I am the former Personnel Director for the City of Muncie. I left my position because of ethics concerns. I advised Ethics Commission on the training, and I actually developed and gave training on how to address ethical concerns to every single employee of the City of Muncie. I was highly disappointed that the training lacked what it needed to actually hold people accountable for what they signed and understood to be right. I commend every single one of you on this council tonight for taking this part very seriously. I also urge you to vote in favor of this tonight. I understand this is a work in progress. I also work in the private sector. When, when we do things in the private sector, sometimes you have to learn as you go. And you know, it's okay, as long as what you're intending to do is what's best for everybody. It's best, and when we talk about ethics, it's what's best for everybody. It's not what's best for one person or their friends. It's what's best for the citizens of Muncie, which is transparency, which is accountability, which is honesty. I was honest, and I did the right thing. But I won't work for people who don't. Thank you.
Elizabeth Edgell, I served on the board or committee, Advisory Committee. I have a question and a comment. My question is, why, three months after we voted on this, is this just not happening? To begin with, Micah did do good work. I wasn't there the day that she came to the meeting. I had a doctor's appointment. But first off, an entity cannot write their own ethics. That, that just doesn't work. And that's kind of what was happening with the city, which is why this come about. We didn't have anything on the books. And without it, I think we all know, I've talked on this before, the history of Muncie and how we got here. And, and if we don't understand where we're coming from, we don't know where we're going. And my comment is, there's been months since we finished this. And with some of these changes that I saw, I was floored. This is the first time I saw them today. And I voted on this three months ago. And if it changes, it's not what I voted on, just so you know that. I'm not going to be happy with that at all. And this is my first time serving on a board, and it's been very interesting, to say the least. Thank you for listening to everybody. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Council. President Dishman, Jeff Robinson, resident, City of Muncie. You know, I, I spoke last month encouraging you all to vote in favor of this ordinance. I still stand firmly in support of this ordinance as well. I also want to remind you all, when it comes to AIM, AIM is the Association of Indiana Municipalities, okay? It is not a member of state government. It is there to advise municipalities on a wide range of things. So, putting that much weight into AIM, I think, is dangerous. Okay? So, that's first and foremost. Secondly, and I believe Ms. Edgell before me mentioned, this has been in the administration's hands since September. Okay, we're now in December. And Mr. Basham, Councilman Basham, with all due respect, you didn't reach out to AIM's attorney until you mentioned today. I think to table this and move it forward, or to, for those of you who voted to table this and push it off yet again, is a little concerning, to be quite honest. I don't know if you, if you didn't read it, if you didn't understand it, if you didn't, I know Mr. Gibson sends legal summaries. I'm sure that he briefed you on all of these potential changes and recommendations by AIM ahead of the meeting. So, it's disappointing, to say the least, that we would try to table this and move it forward, or to, to continue to kick this can down the road. When I brought Resolution six dash twenty-three last April, just like Ms. Wilson, I also had concerns. Being an elected city council member and city council president for three years, I brought this because I had concerns. Quite frankly, it's why I ran in 2019 for city council, because I was concerned that we didn't have ethical government. That's why this ordinance is before you, because it is needed. It is needed. And I want to commend Micah.
I just wish you had proposed it two years ago.
I wish I had to. I wish I had to. Better late than never. But I do want to commend Micah. It takes a ton of courage, a ton of courage, to stand against your boss, to stand against people in a city who hold some power. It takes a lot of courage to do that, and even more courage to come up here after the fact and stand in, in support of this ethics ordinance. So I would give, I would give Micah a tremendous amount of respect, and thank her for being here tonight, and to thank her for having such integrity, that she would leave a job that she cared about for these reasons. So I would encourage you again to vote yes. Everyone is watching. Everyone is watching. You want to vote against ethics, then I wish you all the best. Thank you.
I would like to respond to that if I may. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Two things that you said that bothered me. I don't know if some of you that have read it, you're wrong. Some of us have read it and been to several meetings as some committee members, so I take offense to that, and council is on there. Second of all, everyone is watching. Well, as Jeff Green, Councilwoman Green said, we want to get it right. And as the comment that I made earlier, this has nothing to do with the work they've done. It's just we've got information from city legal and from our council, and we want to get it right. It's not saying that it's not needed. I don't think anyone here would vote against it. I don't, I'm looking around. I don't think any council member here is going to vote against it.
I'm glad.
But he does send us legal stuff, and we got stuff from the city attorney. So, I just want to make it clear that I co-sponsored, that I've been to those meetings, I've participated, I've had conversations with Mr. Taylor, I've had conversation with a lot. So I take offense to say that people are watching. Everyone here wants that for the City of Muncie. And I just want to go on the record saying that, you know?
Sure.
So I'm sure everybody here has read it, I'm sure. But when you get, as a council person, you're trying to make sure that everything is done right, and you get count, you get information from city attorney, from your council, and they kind of don't, you try to find, I for myself, would have loved for it to gone to the governmental affair. I'm not on that committee, but I do trust the council person who's who are on that committee can come back. I trust them that they can come back and give me the best recommendation. So I don't think the criticism is fair, because we're trying to do the right thing. And I appreciate everything you've done. I know how hard you've worked on it. And I am in support of this. And I just wanted to make that clear, because it just made us sound like we don't care, and we're against ethic, and that's not true.
That's right.
If President Dishman would allow me to respond. I'm sorry if you took offense to my question that I questioned. If all of you, if some of you had read it, I apologize. It was a rhetorical question.
Thank you.
Not directed at any one specifically. I said, "I question if you read it." So I do apologize if there was any offense taken to that, certainly. And I think I, I understand, as, as former council president for three years, up until this year, I fully understand the role and the job and the procedure of council members. And I fully understand that, that the suggested changes from AIM had come several weeks ago. I do know that, you know, I, I communicate with council members. I know what's going on with this ordinance. I know what has been going on with this ordinance. And when I say that people are watching, that's just a statement of fact, right? I mean, the citizens of Muncie have screamed for years for ethical government. Do you agree with that, Councilwoman Selvi? So I think to say that people, that everyone is watching how you vote, I think that's just a statement of fact, because if someone were to vote against more ethical government, more integrity, more accountability, more transparency in local government, then I think people would take notice. So I apologize if that seemed, I forget how you characterize that, maybe as a threat. Certainly wasn't a threat. Certainly wasn't a criticism, more or less just a statement of fact.
I don't think I used the word threat.
Okay, well, that's why I said I wasn't sure what the word you used. I prefaced that. So, but thank you very much, President Dishman. I appreciate it very much.
Hi, Chip Taylor. I was the Chair of the Ethics Advisory Committee. I'm, I'm just speaking as a Muncie citizen now. I don't, I don't speak on behalf of the whole committee. I will say, I didn't expect, and I don't think other committee members expected, that our submission would necessarily be, you know, the final word before it was, before it was passed. Okay? We figured there would likely be some clarifying revisions. I've, Dan shared with me, you know, the non-substantive changes that, that came about in response to the discussion with AIM, the discussion with the administration attorney and whatnot. And I think, you know, I don't think they changed anything that, 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 you know, the committee was trying to accomplish with that ordinance. And, you know, we, even beyond that, we knew that the council, they might wish, I'll speak for myself. I knew the council may wish to, to amend, you know, what we presented. The administration might suggest some amendments for you to consider as well. In fact, the committee invited the administration to provide feedback while the ordinance was being developed, twice. We'd have welcomed the administration's engagement in our efforts. You know, some, some of these issues, the substantive issues, they, they could have been discussed then. I, but in any event, we would probably still be looking at final things here. So, something similar review has been conducted. I would point out, I, I hope that, you know, if, if you're, if you're contemplating making additional changes after, you know, that if this, if this was enacted in its, you know, currently amended form, and you do want to contemplate other changes, I hope you do so at a, at a committee hearing. I, I think those substantive changes should probably be, you know, the, the administration's attorney would have a chance to come and express all their concerns. They could be discussed in a public forum, rather than in emails, you know, with the, with the, the council's representatives on that committee. you know, with the, with the, the council's representatives on that committee. The committee could decide, you know, what changes they wanted to recommend to the full council and have, have Dan draft those. Um, and so, because I, I think part of what's happened since here that, you know, they sort of started, you know, looking at, um, you know, AIM pointed out kind of some procedural things to look at, and they started on that, and then like there were some issues, you know, some substantive issues raised, and then some additional substantive issues raised. And, you know, that's the, that's the council's job, right? Uh, and so just an example, sort of thing I think would be good, you know, to discuss in public. I don't know exactly what you were sent for, the administration's attorney. I've seen some of the, you know, recommendations, concerns they've raised. And one, one proposal would weaken the restrictions on political activity there in the proposed ordinance. Okay, in my opinion, that would be a mistake. Those changes wouldn't just weaken the ordinance compared to the way we wrote it. It would be much weaker than the administration's own rules that they impose on employees now. There is much in that ordinance was based on the, the, the administration's own rules that they developed for their employees that, that Michael Wilson shared with us early, early, our, our first substantive meeting, the first meeting we had, we discussed anything. I told her, I saw her tonight. I said, we copied a lot of your homework. It's like, there was, there was a lot of, it's, it's good in there. We, we, we formalized it, put it into uh, an ordinance form, and where needed, we expanded it to cover, um, you know, elected officials and things that you can't cover with just, you know, HR rules. But basically, the part of the ordinance that covers political activity by employees and appointed officials, they're subject to the same restrictions under the administration's own rules now. So I'm not sure why they proposed weakening them. As far as the elected officials, which is the place where we extended it, we merely put the same restrictions on soliciting political contributions that we, that we put on employees. We felt that what's fair for the goose is fair for the gander, right? So, so basically, I'm saying, I hope, if you want to consider additional changes, and I'm, I'm not saying, you know, you may, you do need additional changes. They should be discussed in public at that, at that committee meeting and not be having like the attorneys emailing stuff back and forth. Um, because, um, you know, my understanding, I, that, you know, your attorney can advise you all, but he can't agree to changes, right? I was on the committee. It's, I mean, you all have the, the ordinance now. I think we gave you a good one. I'm not going to tell you it's perfect and shouldn't be touched in any way. Okay, but, um, you know, I think if you go ahead and pass this, you can start appointing commissioners. You can still schedule, um, I mean, you know, meetings and if, if there are other, if, if, if there are changes you want or changes that the administration can persuade you are needed, you know, none of the ordinances are carved in stone. But, uh, you know, we did, we, we turned this over in September. The administration asked for a delay. We thought that, that was fine. You know, another delay, I don't, yeah, I don't know. It's, the, the community has been asking for something like this for quite some time. I think you can go ahead and pay off on that promise, and if it needs to be amended, it can, it can be amended. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask a question of Dr. Taylor. If I may. Dr. Taylor, I appreciate very much your effort and all that you've done for the committee and writing this. AIM does have you listed. I know they said, don't take AIM as, uh, all that they say, but I'll, I'll tell you this, they have you listed as an expert in ethics. Uh, I don't know if you knew that or not. But I read that from them, and, and I appreciate, uh, their confidence in you. We have confidence in you, and I want you to know that. Do you feel comfortable in the different things that have been mentioned, uh, tonight that we have adopted for change?
Yeah, those, the, the, the red line amendments, those were all, no, those were substantive. I, I think, I think they, they, they clarify some things.
Okay.
I think they're going to make it more workable, especially the one sort of delaying any actual processing of complaints until, what was it, March, to, to give the, the commission, because the, the commission is going to need to develop some standard operating procedures and kind of get, get its house in order. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's brand new. Um, so, yeah, that, that's, um, I don't have any problem with like any amendments we made tonight. I've got some concerns, um, about some substantive changes that were proposed by the administration, and I, I shared the one I have the most concern about because it, I, I'm baffled by it, honestly. But, um, yeah, that's, it's, I, I think, you know, what, what, what you're passing tonight is, is far as I can, if you need Chip Taylor's like opinion, yeah, it's fine.
Well, I value your opinion. That's why I asked.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. President. I too want to say thank you for the work that you've done along with your committee. I assure you that after we received our legal summary, the edited or the amended ordinance and, and email, a fairly lengthy email trail with a number of parties, uh, yesterday afternoon, on Sunday, we did read those things, and we are considering these issues um, as earnestly as a city council should.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to also mention that, yes, um, when, you know, we did just get those yesterday, but the, when this was first brought to us, and I was asked to co-sponsor, we were asked to co-sponsor, and I agreed to, and we went ahead, the city wanted another month to review that, so they got that. I was going to introduce this a month earlier. So they did ask for it. We did agree because, you know, we did my input. So they did have that month, just, you know, just.
Well, congratulations. You're in your first year on council, and you're already doing something big, so congratulations. And, and the reason I came back up here is probably to bring some clarification on the training itself. Um, the training that I adopted primarily came from the Inspector General's office of the state of Indiana. It addresses ethics from a standpoint of legal obligation, which is in the Indiana code. So ethics is pretty simple. You all, every single person on this council takes an oath of office and has an obligation to that very same Indiana code. Therefore, sending it to a government affairs committee, and I understand, Row, you know, why, why you suggest that, I do understand it. But you are all government affairs experts for the entire city of Muncie. This right here does not belong in a subsection of the council. It belongs exactly where it's at, and that's in every single one of your plates. And, and every single one of your inboxes when a citizen or employee has a concern. Because that is your place. That is your role. You are the democratically elected body that is here to protect the citizens of Muncie. And you, you serve every four years. Unfortunately, I think it should be every two. I think that maybe four years is an awful long time to decide to get in trouble. But, you know, we're not going to decide that with an ethics bill today, are we? So, thank you, and I just wanted to bring that clarification.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that have been made. When our office looks at this proposed ordinance, we have to look at it as if we're going to prosecute. So when I look through the language in here, I want to make sure that when someone files a complaint, that I can win in court. And some of the language, I can't if it fits in that scenario. So I want to make sure that this is ready to go, so that once the commission is formed and they receive a complaint, I can move forward with that in court. So I just wanted to clarify that that's the reasoning behind most of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to talk? Anybody from the audience?
What are we doing now?
You have a motion.
We have a motion.
Question.
Roll call, please.
For what?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Yes.
Basham?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-four.
Ordinance thirty-eight dash two-four, an ordinance amending chapter seventy-seven parking regulations of the Muncie Code of Ordinances.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're slowing with Muncie Police, and this is going to be nowhere.
We need a motion for, uh, introduce ordinance thirty-eight twenty-four. Roll call, please. All in favor, say aye.
Go ahead, let him speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I was just going to say this is going to be nowhere near as interesting as what we just had, so. Everybody's favorite topic here, uh, is parking, I know. So I'm going to, if I can, Mr. President, distribute materials that are right?
Okay. So I've got one of these for each of you. Thank you. And it will explain, you'll find in there, proposed, and already something.
Thank you.
Lays it out pretty well.
Going through this all night and wasting everybody else's time, um, it has been left with you. You will see, you've got a proposed packet, current packet. You've got, um, city council ordinance that's already been passed, and the state home rule definitions, okay? So, Officer Darren Clark is also with me. He is, uh, my lead officer for the parking division. But all of these ordinances are either already illegal or already enforced previously, okay? They're all safety related. They're parking too close to fire hydrant, fire hydrant, parking too far out from the curb, parking too close to a public or private driveways, parking against the flow of traffic, parking too close to a crosswalk, parking too close to an intersection. It's a lot of language cleanup in here, okay? So to write state codes, you have to cite the registered owner of a vehicle. That's not what we do, okay? We cite the vehicle itself, because there's a defense that if you're citing the registered owner of the vehicle, they might not have been driving it, right? So having our own ordinances here, slightly different from the state code, allows us to keep this ticket money local here as well, instead of sending it somewhere else, so. Um, I would like to draw attention real quick, uh, if I could, to page twelve. Um, I noticed a typo early this morning. That should read, "No person shall park any disassembled, inoperable, unlicensed, or vehicle with an expired license, nor shall any person leave any junked, wrecked, or abandoned vehicle on any street, alley, or city-controlled parking lot or garage. Any unauthorized vehicle found in violation of such a provision of this section shall be removed under the proper order of any member of the Muncie Police Department at the expense of the owner of such a vehicle." Okay, so, like I said, without going through, unless you particularly want to go through each one of the, yeah, okay. They're all in here for you, for you to look at in your own time and go through these. It's all laid out here for you, so all the changes, all the, all the changes are listed out here in red as to why they're needed. Um, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions?
I really like how you're going after the vehicle.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that, and I, that's a, a very good way to, to do that. I feel like that's going to help out a lot, so.
Well, these guys, these guys do a great job about working with people as well, right? So, I mean, when they, when they, you know, when they've got an abandoned vehicle or whatever, they actually get out and talk to these people. Um, so it's not just, we're going to snatch your car and do all that. That's not what this is about. They do a good job of communicating.
Yep, so I like that, and I like the, the, the keeping them, you know, where we, I don't want to say, we keep it here. It's not going, the, the money in the way that it's going, so I really like the proposed plan, so just thank you.
Good.
So when you go talk to the people, you don't cite them right away? You give them a, a chance, you have a conversation, and then you give, what's the timeframe?
Usually tagged for seventy-two hours.
Okay, seventy-two hours.
Then we will come back, or if they call us, our phone numbers, our phone number's on the tag also.
Okay.
So if we get a complaint, we'll go out, we'll tag it for seventy-two hours.
And they call you?
We'll come back at the end of the seventy-two hours and follow up on it. Uh, we'll try to make contact with the last person that owned it.
Okay.
Or if they call in and leave a voicemail, we'll call back. We'll just ask them if they need more time
Okay.
to get the car off the, off the street, or get it plated or whatever, and, and we'll work with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, when you tag a car or find somebody, does that money come through the city clerk's office?
The, when we write a parking ticket, that money goes into the police department's fund. When, when we tag one, like for an abandoned vehicle, there's no money, the city doesn't receive any money for that.
Yeah, but if you give them a ticket for parking next to a fire hydrant, does that money come through?
That stays local, yes.
I mean, does it come through the?
It would under this, yes.
Comes through the city?
Yes.
Anybody else got any questions? Anybody from the audience got any questions?
That's pretty self-explanatory, and they can figure that out. Yeah. That's all we got, unless there's any further questions. Thank you.
Roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-four.
Ordinance thirty-nine ta- dash two-four, an ordinance repealing chapter fifty-five of the Muncie City ordinances entitled cable television.
Is anybody here from the audience to talk on that?
Uh, I can talk about that very quickly. Um, I believe this was prepared by Alan Wisely, one of the assistant city attorneys. He sent me an email a couple of weeks ago, uh, explaining that, um, I don't know if you all remember, a couple of years ago, um, uh, city clerk Munson, uh, had a municode, a company out of Florida, do a analysis of things that needed changed, uh, to update our city code. This is one of those things. Essentially, the cable commission hasn't existed in terms of meeting or having any authority for over ten years, and the state has restricted the city's ability to, uh, to govern and regulate, uh, cable television franchises, so essentially, these provisions are no longer necessary. And this ordinance, and I believe the next one on the agenda, just simply repeal those, uh, sections because they're no longer necessary.
Make a motion to introduce it?
There's been a motion to introduce, introduce it in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Ordinance forty dash twenty-four.
Ordinance forty dash two-four, an ordinance repealing chapter thirty-four, section eight of the Muncie City ordinances entitled Muncie Cable Television Commission.
It's basically the same thing, isn't it, Dan?
Yep.
Any questions?
No, no question.
I make a motion to introduce ordinance forty dash twenty-four.
A second.
There's been a motion to introduce ordinance forty dash twenty-four in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-four.
Ordinance forty dat- forty-one dash two-four, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two of the Muncie City ordinances entitled Waste and Litter Care of Premises.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance? Forty-one.
Second.
Anyone here to talk on it?
Uh, this is similar. Uh, Alan Wisely sent me an email about this. Uh, this section that is being repealed, uh, governs conduct that is, uh, regulated elsewhere within the code in a later adopted ordinance, so, uh, this repeals that in favor of the later adopted ordinance that already governs the same conduct.
Anyone from the council wishing to speak? Anyone from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Ordinance forty-two dash twenty-four.
Ordinance forty-two dash two-four, an ordinance to amend the city of Muncie comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R-five residence zone to the BV Variety Business Zone for four thousand block North Morrison Road, Muncie, Indiana.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance forty-two dash twenty-four?
Second.
Anyone out here from the audience? Anyone out here from the audience?
Good evening, my name is Kathy Benice, and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor, three twenty-five West Washington. Last month, I was here to have this parcel annexed into the city of Muncie. Now, we'd like to switch the zoning from the R five to the variety business, or business variety, that is, the south adjoining zoning to this property. What this is doing is it's expanding the properties from the northwest corner of Bethel and Morrison, it's gonna be six hundred and seventeen feet to the north of that, and it is making it from R five to the variety business so they can develop that area.
Anybody from the council got any comments, which, questions for? Anybody from the audience got any questions for?
Yes, I'm Mary Julia Mason, and I live in that area, so exactly where is this? Because I live at forty-eight oh one west, west Copperfield.
You see Bethel, Morrison, this piece right here.
Oh, it's inside?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, same. We got four table ordinance, ordinance twenty-one twenty-four, or twenty-seven twenty-four. Anyone, anybody wanna bring them off the table tonight? Okay, we'll move into other business. We have any, we have any other business tonight? Okay, audience comments?
Bridges Community Services Board of, oh, Julie Mason, so Julie Mason as the Bridges Community Service Board of Director.
I like doing this anyway. On behalf of the state of Indiana, Bridges Community Service Board of Directors no longer exists as of the end of October two thousand and twenty-four. At this time, the board directors from Bridges Community Service would like to thank the Muncie Management Company, which purchased all the rental property. We want to also thank the Muncie Mission, which purchased all of the Bridges campus equipment, I mean, properties to include the small homes, administrative office, and three shelters, the First Merchant Bank, and various businesses, i.e. Jackson's Plumbing, for assisting and being patient with us during the time that we had no money, but we did it anyway. Also, we want to let you know how we did disperse the funds that we did receive from selling the properties legally through the government. I will say, we, we gave over eighteen thousand dollars to Better Way, the Muncie Mission, nonprofit network, and the YWCA, and we gave money back to, oh yeah, that's right, that's right, you were tard. And also, we gave approximately fifteen thousand dollars to the Ivy Tech Community College Foundation to establish scholarships for the culinary students. And the reason why we gave it back to Ivy Tech Culinary School, because during the time that the board existed, we gave, food was provided to all the homeless people, nutritional, healthy food. So, I say to all of you, for those who helped us, I say thank you, for those who didn't help us, I say thank you also, because as a board of directors, we, we succeeded in accomplishing to sell the properties and to, and Bridges Community Services Board Directors was a good name in the community. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Joseph Romero.
Well, hello again, Joseph Romero. I live at, well, let's see, two-three-two, North Pershing, right here in Muncie, and I am the founder of the Shepherd's Heart and Hands, and we are a public charity here, and I think most of you know me already. Recently, we had our Christmas event, and I think some of you've seen that online, all that has been taking place. It's our annual event, and we did have over three hundred homeless people show up, and boy, I told you, we, we had to open up the main sanctuary just to keep a waiting area so that people can come into the warming center, and if you're not familiar with the warming center, we're open, and every week, we have that place open. I have the privilege to work with the Ball State University, who I pick up food every day, and we feed the community. On Tuesdays, we're doing the food box ministry, because I found out there's a lot of shut-ins. But anyway, it was a really, really good event, many, many agencies were involved, groups of people. I had Muncie Housing Authority there to kind of, because there's something new going on in the neighborhood, and I'm gonna mention it in a minute, but Muncie Housing, I wanted them there, I wanted anyone that could help me get some of these people off the street there, because we got camps being moved again, and I'll talk about that. But we provided the tents, the sleeping bags, the, the backpacks filled with the toiletries, and there were other nonprofits available to help. We had some biker groups that did fundraisers so that we can get all this stuff, because keep in mind, I'm just a small little fry out here in this city, and so I depend on the community by putting things like the Amazon wishlist, and the residents of Muncie said, I'm gonna order some backpacks, I'm gonna order toiletries, and through that, we were able to bless all these people. So, it's a collaborative effort, I wanna make sure everyone knows that, it's not me, myself, and I, but it's us, it's the city of Muncie, working together. So, praise God for that. We do have a list of a lot of people that are asking for tents, and we did give out tents, but my policy with tents is, I have to verify that you're really at a homeless camp, because tents are expensive, you're, you're not gonna sell it at the local crack house, no offense to anyone, you know, but we wanna verify that the people getting what we dish out is really needed. Um, I need to bring up something, you know, last year, we went through it with the Muncie Inn, we all remember that topic, right? What was the big issue? Ten days, they had to move out. We got the same problem going on, guess what? I'm sorry to be the one to tell you, if you don't know, the biggest camp in Muncie, my tent city, ten days to move, along with some of the other camps. So, I'm, I'm asking for your prayers, I'm asking for your help, I'm also asking for whoever has the power to give an extension, please, because I can raise the volunteers, the committees, to move a lot of these people. But keep in mind, the big camp has been there for over two years, and when we say a camp, I know a lot of us picture a man in a tent, two people in a tent, no. This is like large, established camps, like something out of a Vietnam movie, wood burning stoves, giant tents, a lot of things moving, and a lot of parts involved. Um, I bring up, though, this problem, we went through it last year with the winter, a lot of camps had to be moved, again, it was in the winter, that was my pet peeve, I thought, sure, let's move them if we need to move them, but why do it right when the snow's coming, right before Christmas? And so, I know it's gonna happen, my hands are gonna be tied, but the same cycle's gonna continue unless something changes, and I propose a change. Look at your maps, look at your city, land that you own, tell me, is there a spot that is not in the neighborhood, possibly by the railroads? Let me lease some land and create a structure for a lot of these unhoused people, what am I talking about? A legalized encampment run, organized with sanitation, safeguards in place, supervised, unlike anything you've seen. Why can I do it? Because I've done it in other places, I've been with this topic since nineteen ninety-one. I am not new to the topic of homeless encampments or residential programs. Again, I remind you, you have a mission here, a shelter here. I worked for the big one in Orlando, Florida, huge one. I worked in that city for many years, and we had huge community outreaches with the government, with the sheriffs, with the mayor, and I plan to do the next Christmas, probably at the fairgrounds, because warming center won't do. But if we can get some land, I'm willing to lease it and put a proposal before you all, how we can solve this. Am I talking about permanent place? No, temporary place, because winter, there's always a waiting list, call the hub, go to the mission, and most of these people will not qualify for the programs that are available. We, we kinda already know that, if you got a felony, there's red tape, if you've been evicted, no good, and most of these people have pets, families, they're married, you know, I, I know there's a shelter being built that will accommodate a few family members, but in the meantime, what are we gonna do? There's a lot of projects y'all working on, praise God for that, I know it's coming, you know, but in the meantime, we gotta consider all these hundreds of people that I meet on a weekly basis. I'm willing to do the work. My organization is one hundred percent volunteer, and I, I understand, Councilman Mason, I understand the area I might be interested in, might fall into your area, I, I'll be sending you emails, if that's okay, and, and to all of you, so that you all could follow what I'm proposing and what can be done. I'm very passionate about wanting to help, I think you know that, and I, I love you guys, and I appreciate your time. Uh, let's see if there was anything else here. I'm trying to get in touch with the decision makers, how do I go about doing this? Because the three minutes here is nice, but I, I need to, I need to take this to the next level, how do I get a meeting with someone who can help me? So, please, when I write you an emails, I'll be looking for your response so that you can guide me and coach me. And I'm willing to play with others, you know, other nonprofits and all that, but there are other organizations trying to imitate and do what I do, and there are issues with that, because when you wanna take volunteers into the woods, you're putting them in danger. If you're not trained in the area of outreach, you're putting people at risk. Camps are designed to be invisible for a reason, because they depend on it, because what is a camp? Squatting on property they don't own, it's illegal. So, but I'm planning to work with a lot of the organizations that are trying to do good. You'll be hearing a phrase called Art Muncie, good people wanna do some good, and I'm hoping they'll listen to some of my counsel, so that we can do good things together, and there's others. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I had walked, I walked through one of those camps just last week.
Yes, oh, were you one of the ones?
Yes. What is, what is being done for some type of shelter other than tents?
I, I'm glad you brought that up, I left the best part of it out, I am building shepherd's huts, but I need a place, a shep, now, I'm doing housing as well, the low barrier housing, but it, it takes funding, so as soon as we get more funding, we'll be able to, because I have a small property, it's not gonna accommodate too many little tiny homes you would probably call them, we're calling them shepherd's huts. And the reason this came up is I was tired of some of my women that are in the woods being victimized, because a tent is vulnerable, but a tiny home, and, and group homes, I don't want them to stay in the woods, that is not my intent. There are some people that would love to teach them how to survive and stay out there, that is not the answer. We gotta get them back in, but it takes some of us taking the pastor hat off, teaching them how to get back into society, we call it life coaching, counseling, social services, working and putting an infrastructure together to get them back into housing. So, over time, as a missionary, I, I go to the camps weekly for wellness checks, but I also ask them, will you sit down with me weekly and talk? And then those that are willing, get off the camps. We recognize quite a few at the Christmas event, we gave plaques out to people who got housing, to recognize, yes, if you keep your appointments, you can get off the street, if you get that job, you can get an income. A lot of these people have an income, but nobody will rent to them.
Well, one of the problems that they're having over in East Central.
Yes, that's my area.
Is, that Hughes Nature Preserve.
That's what I heard, I got the letter.
And, you know, the, I've been, I met with the director, executive director of Hughes Nature Reserve, and there were some people from the state, Mr. Dale, we all, we all met over there.
Yes.
And legally, they can't be in a nature preserve.
That's what I heard.
And, and these people want them out. I can understand that, but at the same time, you know, I would like to see these people get some type of shelter other than a tent.
Yes.
You know, I don't know what we can do, we, we're trying to put a committee together to see if we can come up with some ideas.
That would be awesome.
There was a big fire over there.
Yes, I'm aware.
That damaged the nature preserve pretty good.
Okay, that's sad, that's probably what sparked this.
Yeah.
Because I was saying, I, I read the letter, and I noticed that the land was donated two thousand and two, or something like that, and I was like, all of a sudden, something happened, so I, I read in between the lines, it says something caused this.
Well, I, you know, I've had residents that live right across from it, has been in contact with me.
Oh, yes, yes.
You know, they're fearful for something happening to their residents, because.
Exactly, exactly.
So, you know, I would, I would really like to see, like to see something in the lines of, of, of a, a real shelter.
I can produce a shelter that is similar to what you guys call your RV parks, that would be, and it has been done already by many cities, where an RV park is like a tiny home community supervised by trained individuals such as myself, that knows how to supervise people, such as some of these people, because they all have their different issues, and, and they're not all capable of holding a job like a normal person, but, um, I, I tell people, we shouldn't leave anyone behind, you know, but it's all about having the right infrastructure in place. A lot of people focus on the housing alone, I'm like, that's just one part of it, you, you gotta have the counseling, you gotta have the jobs, and you gotta have it tailored towards these individuals. When they come to the warming center, I have the privilege to get to know them intimately, and, and have, I, I could see the hangups as I interview them mentally, legally, spiritually, emotionally, what is going on that's keeping them on the street? Some of them are stuck, they, they got that flat tire on their journey, never got it fixed, and they're, and I preach about that all the time, I says, we, we gotta get you back in the road of life, you know, and some of them, they wanna make a permanent life. Now, a bunch of them in that particular camp will be okay, because there was somebody who did receive some finances, and they're gonna be okay, but there's a lot of them that won't. As far as an area, I'm very interested in finding out about the land on the other side of Broadway. I would love to lease that land, if that's not a preserve, I don't know, you know, it's just across the street. And I could build a privacy fence, build tiny homes, community kitchen, work with the sanitation department, to have all the bells and whistles in place, so that there is no trash, and there is supervision, and it would be drug-free, you know? And it doesn't happen overnight, it takes a team of people, but working with organizations like Teen Challenge, where we have a eighty-six percent success rate, I know all the bells and whistles of what we need to do to, to help these individuals, and you gotta be on the property, you gotta have staff on the property as well. A lot of people have done it throughout the United States, and it's starting to become more common, but a tiny home is one way to do it, group homes is my preferred way as I get homes, if I can find three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes, and have a men's home, a woman's home, and run it with supervised people living in the home, it works very well. Sober living homes, there's so many categories, because some of the people are out there are seniors, like Letha, and, you know, with her five dogs, she ain't gonna go to the shelter.
Sir, sir, can you get with Mr. Mason after?
I sure can, thank you.
We got a lady back here wanting to talk.
Yes.
Thank you, it was Tasha Barnes Griffin again, I'm the chief executive, chief executive officer for YWCA, and one of our programs is the Emergency Shelter Program, so just to piggyback off, we know that there is, thanks to Bridges closing, we have a consortium of our homeless providers in our community, so YWCA, A Better Way Services, Muncie Mission, Christian Ministries, the Center Township Trustees, we have community development partnering with us, along with Open Door Health, and so our consortium, we meet every single Monday to talk about these issues, right? We also have for the winter, warming stations, all of our shelters and programs have spaces for people who may not be able to necessarily want to maybe live in congregate shelter, but they can come in and be warm. We'll provide them support. You see that Together to House, we're going to create the new permanent supportive housing opportunities. But what Tasha, not what Tasha, but YWCA, so we are the coordinated entry lead for our region, so Region Six, so that covers Delaware County. And then Frank Baldwin is the continuum of care chair for our region. And so we are responsible for ensuring that everybody that's homeless in Region Six, and specifically Delaware County, have places to go. We also understand that there are a lot of individuals who don't like systems and structure and don't want to be in shelters, but we still want to work with those outreach folks to help them. In real time, with Craddock Park or Reserve, there is a list of individuals. We have the list of names, and so we are, our doors are stand open to support women and the men that need places. And let's be real, there are some hardest to house, some who are unsafe to put in congregate living, and so we do need to figure that out. But I just want folks to know that there is a continuum of care, there is a housing consortium, there are folks in community who have those grants and funds. We are benefits from Bridges and the city of Muncy, and so we're working. And so if anybody needs support, please don't hesitate to reach out. I just wanted that on public record, that people can reach out to YW, A Better Way, Muncy Mission, Christian Ministries, the Trustees Office, Open Door, and we will help. We have a priority. We have to prioritize homelessness in our community. We're getting funded for that. And so we'll help in any way that we can, and I just wanted to, to share that.
Is it any way possible that?
Absolutely. Absolutely, there are, there are opportunities to partner, and that's why I wanted to say that, and I've said it to them before. I mean, it's just to reach out to us and let's have conversation. There are people that structured and traditional shelter programs will help, and then there are those who won't, you know, but it's cold. And I would just say, I think today, we've had a couple of women come in. I'm cold. It's cold out there in the elements. I have my tent, but here I am, and we want to be able to support, support that too. So, um, yeah, so I will connect. We can connect. But I just wanted to get that out there in public. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Micah Wilson.
Oh, that's not me.
I'll make it short, since I already pretty much spoke about what I wanted to speak about. So, thank you. And unlike the person who said it to me originally, I mean this. Thank you for your service and good luck.
Do you want to speak, ma'am?
Yes. So I'm Janetta Presley, and I ran Fiona's Place last year, which was the only shelter open for, at nighttime for people who couldn't go to the Muncy Mission or to Christian Ministries. Christian Ministries had contacted me about reopening Fiona's Place again as a warming center, but I don't have the house for that this year. That fell through for us in August, so there is no housing. They did call and want a meeting with me about opening again somewhere. I don't know where. I don't know that I can take that on. I'm terminally ill on hospice right now, but I am going to go to the meeting. I am going to talk to them. And I may take this endeavor on for the winter. So we'll see. I don't know. The other thing is, is that we have some homeless folks in the Chevy plant that are living across the street from my property where I live. They're back there again. That's a fire hazard. Also, if they would start, they start fires back there at night along that fence row by the railroad tracks. And I live in a house trailer. If that would blow across that land, that would get onto my trailer, it would, it would be gone, you know? So we do need to do something about our homeless folks and also our sex offenders who can't go to the Muncy Mission and Christian Ministries for housing, because they're not allowed, though, there at those places. So I am going to go to the meeting. I am going to talk to Christian Ministries. I don't know that I'm going to be able to do it this year, but maybe Fiona's Place will open back up for the winter. We'll just have to see.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? For a second? Or adjourn?